Good evening and welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake Meeting of Council held October 20th, 2015. To start, we'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We have the approval of the agenda. It was moved by councillor Morgan and seconded by councillor Kylie that council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of October 20th, 2015 as presented. All in favor? Thank you. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared. Petitions and delegations? We have none. Acceptance of the minutes and recommendations. It was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Morgan that council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The regular meeting of council held October 6th, 2015, and the public meeting held October 13th, 2015. All in favor? Thank you. Reports of municipal officers and communications. Nancy, the chief administrative officer, you'll start.
I'm going to start with the amendments to the capital budget. These are housekeeping items, things that council has already discussed and approved, but for the purpose of our capital budget, we need to give direction to the treasurer to be able to move those amounts. The first one is the Tech Pioneer residence. We have an emergency situation where the telephone system went down. The cost is $10,399.88. This amount will be drawn from the TPR reserve, and these will come up in the... with the bylaws. Are you going to read the bylaws on this? Yep, we have bylaws to read on this. There are also Brown Dog Park. We're just moving money. They have a donation account, and we move it out of the donation account to it. They did some additional work this year. They still have about $2,600 left in their donation account for further work. We're just moving it from donations into capital to cover what they did this year. The next one is the funding for the furnace at Kirkland Lake daycare. This is the balance of the work that is done predominantly. It was done last year, and they still had some work to complete this year in the amount of $3,609.03, so we need to move that amount from where we had it in reserve into the capital budget.
Okay. Thank you. And I have three resolutions to deal with those, so I'll just read them. It was moved by councillor Morgan and seconded by councillor Kylie that council approves the increase of $10,399.88 to the 2015 capital budget for the installation of a new telephone system at the Tech Pioneer residence. This amount will be drawn from our TPR reserve fund. All in favor? Thank you. The next resolution has to do with the Rosa Brown Dog Park. It was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Morgan that council approves the increase of $5,743.25 to the 2015 capital budget for improvements to the Rosa Brown Dog Park. This amount will be drawn from donations made by the Rosa Brown Dog Park committee. All in favor? Thank you. And the third resolution is for the furnace at the daycare. It was moved by councillor Morgan and seconded by councillor Kylie that council approves the increase of $3,609.03 to the 2015 capital budget for the installation of a new furnace at the Kirkland Lake daycare. This amount will be drawn from funding from the District of Tomiscoming Social Services Administration Board. All in favor? Thank you. And we can go on to B now, Nancy.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Jen to come up. We're going to have a discussion about the write-off of uncollectible taxes from our tax sale.
So, we had a tax sale. This was the second round of tax sale process for these properties. The first round was unsuccessful for all those properties that were listed, so Val had brought it back and asked to re-advertise, so we wrote off all the old prior taxes to hopefully advertise at a lower price, and many of those properties were successful in that tax sale. However, there was two properties, 1321 and 1322, that were still unsuccessful in the tax sale. So, under the municipal act, because we've exhausted all of our options, we have that ability to write off the taxes as uncollectible, and we'll collect those school board taxes back from those properties.
Jen, can you just talk about the benefits of doing that to council?
Oh, yeah. So, by being able to write it off and not just allowing that property to sit as uncollectible anymore, it'll no longer be in our receivables, so our receivable balances will decrease. It will have an increase to the write-off account and the expenses. However, we can budget for this going forward now because we've had two unsuccessful tax sale attempts on these two properties. We can, in the future now, because I would advise not to vest these properties, going forward, we can budget that we know we're going to write off these properties every year because they were unsuccessful, and we don't want to vest these, so it will not be a tax receivable to us. We would budget as an expense for that every year. And we do budget for this annually. This was just one of these properties, or two of these properties that came up this year that would like to be written off.
Councillor Morgan.
Jen, so we can write these off without vesting them?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we've had two unsuccessful tax sales.
Okay, because obviously, there's concern about vesting these particular properties, right?
Yeah. And that's why we're choosing not to vest, and I've spoken with municipal affairs, and because we've had those two unsuccessful tax sale files, and we're choosing not to vest, we can write the taxes off going forward.
And we'll be able to get back the school board tax?
Every year, yeah.
Councillor Mino.
Jen, does that mean that these two particular properties are up for sale to anyone still?
No, so they're not, because we're not vesting, they're not in our name, so if should somebody potentially may want to buy this in a few years, we would have to go through that tax sale process again to advertise them for tax sale because they're not our properties to just sell to anyone as we please.
And off the top of your head, do we have any other properties in this same situation?
That are... Well, these are the only properties that we're choosing not to vest right now, and these are all the other properties we've either vested, or I think lots of properties we've vested in prior tax sales, so those would be available for sale.
And would these two properties be on the list of available properties?
No, because they wouldn't be on a listing from the Town of Kirkland Lake because they're not our properties to list for sale. So, somebody would have to have prior knowledge that, you know, we did a tax sale on these properties, and when would be the next time something like this would be coming available for tax sale. But we don't have to wait another three years for it to go into arrears. It's been in arrears now. We've tax sailed it once. Now we can just go through the process of the one-year period of notification, and then after that one-year period, if the taxes are not paid, then we would then advertise for sale, and it would be a month and a half until we can sell it.
Councillor Kylie.
For the benefit of the newer councillor, Jen, if we... the reason for not vesting is there could be something wrong with the property environmentally or whatever, and that's... We don't want it in our name.
Exactly.
Jen, if we, by writing off the taxes, that frees us, because if we don't write off these taxes, will we have to continue to pay school tax?
Yes.
And if we write them off, then we'll get that back?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councillor Morgan?
Jen, because we're not vesting it, does it stay in the possession of the original owner?
Yes.
So, are they still getting sent a tax bill?
Yep, they'll receive a tax bill.
And we'll just continue to write it off every year?
Yep.
Thank you, Jen. I have a resolution to read here. It was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Morgan that council directs the treasurer to remove the liens, write off taxes as uncollectible, and do not vest the properties associated with tax files 13-21 and 13-22. All in favor? Thank you.
Council has been presented the 2015 Audit Planning Report by Ross Pope for you to read and peruse and bring any questions forward. At this time, we need to do a resolution that council has been presented that report and that everyone is in favor of it. It is available in hard copy in the clerk's office if anybody does want to read it any further.
Okay, thank you. I have a resolution here. It was moved by councillor Morgan and seconded by councillor Kylie that council accepts the Town of Kirkland Lake 2015 Audit Pla-
The next item is the Ontario Good Roads Conference, and it is happening in February 1st to 24th of 2016 in Toronto, again being held at the Fairmont Royal York Hotel. We are asking at this time, because travel arrangements and registration and that sort of thing has to be done this month, we're asking for anyone who is interested in attending, attendees from the staff. I would like to offer that Mark Williams attend this conference on behalf of staff and looking for someone who would like to represent council there. We would like to have some delegations with ministers, in particular our Swastika Sewerage Treatment Plant, and looking for funding in that regard to supplement our applications and a few other issues that we would like to meet with ministers for. So, we do have good reason to go and attend this this year. We always like to attend if it's going to mean us bringing dollars back to our community, and we think it is worthwhile for us to attend this year, so we'd like to ask for a councillor to represent us.
Yeah. Councillor Morgan.
Just based on the fact that these are similar, some of the similar issues that we dealt with last year at the ministers' thing, I'd certainly be more than willing to attend and to further those causes. We were extremely successful last year, and, you know, I think it's very important that we attend these things when it's appropriate, so I'm willing to go.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, councillor Morgan has put his name. I just wanted to mention that this is something that I would have really liked to attended as well. However, the dates are not available on those dates to attend. But I do have a resolution here. If I could read it. It was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Morgan that council approves the following staff and council member to attend the Ontario Good Roads Association Conference in Toronto, February 21st to the 24th, 2016, named Mark Williams, Director of Physical Services, and Todd Morgan, councillor. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, the next item is, item two is the... Joanne's going to speak to that.
Okay, this is a request from the Royal Canadian Legion for Remembrance Week, the activities that go on annually. So, they're asking council to declare the week of Remembrance Day for Legion Week. They'd like us to fly their flag. They'd like to declare poppy tag days, and they'd like a parade permit.
Okay, I have a resolution here. It was moved by councillor Morgan and seconded by councillor Kylie that council approves the following requests from the Royal Canadian Legion Branch 87 regarding Remembrance Day campaign activities. One, poppy tag days to be held Friday, November 6th, and Saturday, November 7th, 2015. Two, Remembrance Week be proclaimed from November 4th to November the 11th in and for the Town of Kirkland Lake. Three, the Remembrance Day flag be flown at Town Hall during the Remembrance Week. Four, a permit be issued for a parade on Wednesday, November the 11th, beginning at 10:30 a.m. And five, the Town of Kirkland Lake purchase a reef at the cost of $106 to be laid at the Senatath during the Remembrance Day ceremonies on November 11th. All in favor? Thank you.
Okay, so this one is a request from the Chamber of Commerce. They're asking to hold the Santa Claus Parade on Friday, November the 27th.
I have a resolution. It was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Morgan that council approves the Kirkland Lake District Chamber of Commerce's request for the Santa Claus Parade to be held on Friday, November 27th, beginning at 7:00 p.m. All in favor? Thank you. And the Armstrong Resolution.
This is a request from the Tomiscoming Municipal Association. It came through the township of Armstrong. It's concerning MPAC and the tax appeals that have been going through by large corporations, and they've been successful. So, the Tomiscoming Municipal Association is asking for all member municipalities to petition the Ontario Government to disband MPAC and go back to local assessment boards.
Councillor Kylie.
Yes. Mayor Antonio Ozzy, you and I had discussed this briefly. Both Shangyi and myself were at the TMA meeting, and there was a fair bit of discussion on it. I think the biggest concern was that the MPAC, every time this... I forget the name of the group that has been filing the appeals, but they seem to automatically end up getting 15%, 20% clawback. Whether the municipalities have much say in it or not, it just seems to be automatic. The language of the resolution, to me personally, I think it's a little strong. It's basically saying, "Get rid of them." I think it has to be lightened up a bit because it's not going to happen on a resolution like that. I feel they have to be more cooperative and work with the municipalities in the discussion stage instead of just automatically turning the appeals over or letting the appeals go through. That's my thoughts, anyway.
Councillor Mino.
I agree with you, Pat. This is asking for a completely solution, and I think we are getting some services. It's costing the town $108,000 a year for this service. It would be very hard to replace it with a municipal service, which would change according to the population and so on. I think we better ask more like maybe how the system is actually distributed to the municipalities, how the ARB works. Those are the questions we need to ask, and those are the involvement we need to get into in terms of having some kind of say into how this is done. You're right. I don't like the fact that these appeals go there. They're reviewed, and there's always like a negotiating sort of effect going on, and to me, that's not serving the municipality well. So, if there could be some kind of arms-length, either from a municipal perspective or some kind of representation, which would be a fair sort of assessment of the situation versus somebody from, I don't know where this ARB actually emanates from, it could be people in Toronto who are assessing things based on what their visual memory is of a town site. We have town sites with brand-new home in one thing, and we have a shack, if you wish, on the same street, and so that, we have that to contend with in terms of our assessment. So, I would perhaps tone it down myself and just ask for either a review or some kind of input from the municipality as to how to better the service.
Yeah, I would certainly agree with both councillors. I think this resolution is a little harsh, as councillor Kylie had mentioned, and I think it's somewhat premature. I think, you know, to disband or to disband would not serve our community in any way, but I would urge that we continue to work with MPAC to find solutions to the problems that we face here. And in years to come, who knows? This resolution may be read, but I just think it's somewhat premature at this point. And I can read the resolution. If there's a council, did anybody else want to speak to this, or we can... Councillor Morgan.
Yeah, I'm not speaking just to speak against my fellow councillors, but this issue with MPAC has been going on now for almost as long as I've been on council. We've got an organization that we're paying a huge amount of money to, to assess property values fairly, and when it... all it takes is a simple appeal to be filed, and they completely roll over on it. They don't defend their assessment whatsoever, and it's becoming a joke. And, you know, we were somewhat successful in getting them to come in and reassess everything in Kirkland Lake, but when it comes to these appeals, they basically just roll over. I do think it's a bit harsh to say, you know, "Get rid of it," but I think we need to send them a strong message that, you know, "We're only going to put up with this so much longer." Like, this is ridiculous. They just are not doing their job. They assess all these properties, and then all somebody has to do is sneeze, and they just roll over. So, it's very, very disappointing, and I think we need to send a strong message. Maybe this one is not the right message, but MPAC needs to get that message, and the province needs to get that message.
I can tell you, through the TMA, the Tomiscoming Mayor's Action Group, we have had representation from MPAC at our meeting, and some of the discussions are just what you're talking about. One of the areas of discussion was that, because we rely so heavily on that assessment, and because it's almost impossible for us to financially afford to pay it back, that MPAC stand behind their assessment and use... so that we're insured. So, if they make a mistake, their insurance covers the mistake and not us. This is one avenue that is being discussed, and God knows that MPAC has a huge, huge set of reserves there as well. So, there is work being done with them. I think we have to continue to get the message that we're not happy, entirely happy with their service, and we'll go forward from there.
What was the answer to this? Did they answer back to you, or did...
Well, it's like most discussions. They listen. They certainly understand our predicaments. I think they find themselves in a predicament as well, where all these corporate lawyers are flying over the Tim Hortons and all these huge corporations, very talented people. They put together an extremely good case to the ARB, and in many cases, they're rewarded back some of the taxes that they paid the community in the past. So, they are getting the message, and I think they're getting it certainly from many municipalities, not just ours, and large ones as well. So, I think they know there's a problem. They certainly know there's a problem. Councillor Kylie.
What is the actual involvement of the municipality as far as the appeal process? Did we just hear about it after the fact?
Well, we hear about it before. We've been given a list of all the commercial and industrial sites that made an appeal, and our role is, when they make their decision, they advise us of the decision.
We do... we are asked by MPAC if we would like them to represent us at the ARB, and we can elect to have them represent us or not have them represent us if we wanted to send a lawyer instead. In the past, we have always had MPAC represent us in these hearings because they're most knowledgeable about the process of the hearing and the information that they're presenting. Although we don't feel that's been terribly successful, there is another option that if this council wishes to, that we could do our own motion, a resolution. If you find that this one is too harsh, looking for perhaps what is, you do want to see changes in MPAC.
Thank you.
Antonio, just to clarify, that came up because the Province of Ontario wanted to re-examine on Queen's Park, the city of Toronto.
Yeah, it is, isn't it? Yeah, and, you know, I think it hit, to a great extent, home here in the north when the Oak Lake, I believe there, they had to rebate or have to rebate over a million dollars back, so it certainly came to light there as well. Yep. It's, you know, they have the same corporate lawyers out there, and, you know, they do it, they do it for free. They just take a percentage of what they, you know, it's a... So, do we read this resolution and defeat it?
Or defer it. You can read it if you'd like to read it.
Why don't we close the circle on this?
Certainly.
And if we defeat it, then it's...
Or defer it, yes.
Okay. "It was moved by councillor Morgan and seconded by councillor Kylie. Whereas the accuracy of assessments provided by municipalities from MPAC have been substantially challenged successfully by a number of large corporations, costing property taxpayers to shoulder the burden. And whereas the member of municipalities of the Tomiscoming Municipal Association have long expressed their displeasure with the inaccuracy of the assessments as provided to them by Municipal Property Assessment Corporation. And whereas this inaccuracy has again been confirmed by the appeals launched on properties within the city of Toronto, including Queen's Park by the Province of Ontario, who sets the related assessment policies MPAC uses. Therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Kirkland Lake support the Tomiscoming Municipal Association in support of the dissolution of MPAC in favor of the restoration of a local assessment bodies." in support of the dissolution of IMPACT in favor of the restoration of a local assessment bodies.
Just for clarification, we are planning to just approach the problem in a different way, right? Okay.
But with the same amount of energy. So, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, resolution is defeated. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would that entail us having to make a notice of motion to reflect what we're actually saying at this table?
I can bring back another one from another meeting, too. Like, we can write up something that is...
Well, if the discussion around the table is defeating this one with the intent of sending a different message, I think we should draw one and put under notice of motion.
Okay, we can defer this. Instead of defeat it, we can defer it.
No, that's fine, defeat is fine. That's a good process. I'm just talking about the next one, which would reflect our views as this Kirkland Lake's council. Should be one put forward. And I believe you have enough feedback that we're asking the whole system to be reviewed. Is, I believe that's what we're asking, for review of how they operate and...
Yes. Yes, we can use that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Minow. Director of Community Services, I guess Nancy, you're going anywhere.
That's me today, Bonnie's away. Bonnie's in New York City today. She's asked me to bring this forward for her. I'm sure you've read the report to council. It's regarding the elevator, existing elevator at the community complex. It's close to 40 years old. The existing cylinder for that elevator is possibly a buried, single-bottom cylinder. In the spring of 2015, we were notified by TSSA, which is a regulatory body, that there's a new safety code for elevators, and possibly we weren't going to be in compliance. The new requirement is that it needs to be replaced with a double-bottom cylinder sealed with PVC protection. So we went back to see, you know, where we bought the elevator. It was a Montgomery, which has since been purchased by Kone. And asked them to give us a stamped engineered letter stating that the cylinder installed on our elevator was, in fact, already a double bottom. What we got back from them was a letter not certified by an engineer and saying that it's most likely possessing, but not definitive. That letter's been sent off to the TSSA for the engineers to review. They will most likely decline that letter and send out an inspector. Secondly, the TSSA's indicated to us that now there's a new code coming out in 2016, and there's possibility that any buried cylinder will not be allowed. So having said that, and we were looking at the costs of, the cost of the work that needs to be done at the high end of our three quotations that we received so far, we're looking at about $91,781 to replace this single-bottom cylinder into a double bottom, which may at some time also be disproved, which really doesn't make sense. And also, we're having a hard time getting parts for this elevator that's 40 years old, and it's constantly failing and requiring parts. What we would have to do is, they've sent us a variance proposal that we would need to sign, saying, well, keep it in operation, but we know it could, you know, plummet to the ground at any moment, and you'll be responsible. And of course, we're not about to sign anything like that. We would have to, we will have to, in turn, if we're not going to do the repairs to the $291,000 on the old elevator, close it at this time. Bonnie's made a couple of recommendations about it, about either spend that money to retrofit it, add in a commercial stair lift down the existing stairwell at a cost of about $28,975. The trouble with that is it's not compliant for people in wheelchairs. It's okay if somebody has crutches and, you know, can maneuver that. What I'd like to suggest, another option, is to, once we do get our letter back from TSSA, to close the existing elevator and possibly incorporate in our new pool plan an elevator, either through the existing shaft or into the new build. And instead, put that money into the new build plan and have ourselves a new elevator instead of a retrofitted 40-year-old. We also do have an accessibility requirement in our, it's called our Built Environment Accessibility Plan that we have to have in place by 2017, and all areas of that complex do need to be accessible by that time. So having said that, I'm recommending that we investigate incorporating a new elevator or retrofitted in, a new elevator in the old shaft into the new pool planning process. And when we get the documentation from TSSA, to close the existing elevator.
Counselor Morgan.
I really liked the idea of incorporating the elevator into the new build. One of the things that bothered me about the layout that we had was that we were going to be having two elevators in that building. And elevators are really nothing but a high-maintenance item. They're a real bill of expense to keep them updated. There's lots of inspections that are required, et cetera, et cetera. And if you've got two of them, you know, it's that problematic. So if we could somehow, you know, incorporate both into the design, into one elevator, so that we can access the pool level and the lower level or whatever, I think that would be a really, really good solution. So we can take this money and add it to our pool build. But I must admit, I'm very disappointed that Kone came back with a really lame response like that. Like, they should either know or not know, you know, what this is. And I would not let them off the hook with that simple letter. I mean, they should be able to come up with a proper answer, one way or the other.
Thank you.
We did pay them for that, we did do a purchase order to pay them, to have that letter done, that inspection done, that recommendation done. And we did not get the engineer drawing, we did not get a definitive answer from them saying it's this or this. And so we have not paid them.
Counselor Shamir.
Hasn't been designed yet, so anything's possible. And like I said, the other option is using the shaft that the old elevator's in and putting a new elevator in there. That might be better, more cost-effective, but until we get in the design process.
And we should wait till they have a new rules, while they have them in force, and then early enough to see.
That's what they've advised us. So whether they actually come or not, that's what they're advising us. So even if we did do the repair and do the double-bottom cylinder... Yeah.
Counselor Roman.
Just getting back to the letter from Kone, did they give their reasoning as to how they came to their conclusion? Because there's different, there's different ways of this being interpreted. I can see somebody not wanting to state definitively what is there. But at the same time, there may be evidence that, that technical standards may be able to draw their own conclusion. Like, say, every elevator that was sold by that company had the double, the double-bottom cylinder. So, or did they just provide a cotton-dry response?
It's a, I'm sorry, I believe that I had the letter here with me that they sent. There it is. And we asked, they thought they would be able to simply look at their records, you know, using the number of the elevator, et cetera, and go back and tell us. And what they've said to us is that they've examined the records of the Montgomery hydraulic elevator. Our records show this job was manufactured in 1976. Montgomery started doing double-bottom cylinders in 1972. However, the engineering file for this job is not available. However, its hydraulic cylinder most likely possesses a double bottom, conforming to the safety code. So that's, it was a little wishy-washy in saying, most likely it does, and they didn't...
That's a positive, most likely, though, and I would think there's a chance, but...
Until 2017, when TSSA comes out and says, by the way, those double bottom.
So I, you know, I would continue to, until we get a definitive response now from the TSSA. Business as usual.
Counselor Minow.
Just some questions regarding stair lift versus the elevator. Like, that elevator is strictly for human transport, right?
Well, yes, and they do also transport equipment, you know, fitness equipment, that kind of stuff through it. At the present time, we really only have, Bonnie said, we really only have one person who consistently uses the elevator. Most others are be able to get to that levels, perhaps through outside doors. But there's not a door, even the back door, the hockey door, we call it, still has a set of about six stairs going down to that level. So there's no entrance that takes you right to the bottom level. We have one person who does use the elevator at this time.
Okay, because my next question was going to be, is a stair lift probably cheaper? Or, you know, more the functionality we needed for, for, say, maybe a wheelchair? And in the design of the pool, maybe a nicer slope of stairs where the chairlift could be incorporated?
The one that she quoted, that was a stair lift, it was the kind of a seat where you could sit on it and it would transport you, so it would not transport a wheelchair down the stairs? And that was at the almost $29,000.
Yeah, I think one of the options of using the existing shaft, to me, it makes sense. I see if we put it in the new pool and put a new shaft down, then we have to tunnel from the lower area into the, into the, into the activity area where the exercise room is. So, but we're a mining town, and we're a miner, so that shouldn't be a problem. But I think it would add considerable expense to the project. But let's let the experts look at it. I guess what we have to understand is that we have to, are obligated and responsible to provide access to our services for everyone. So we have to come up with a solution. And as we go forward, I'm sure they'll come up with some different ideas in costing, and can bring it back to the table.
So I'm looking for direction as to, once we get the TSSA letter, to actually close down the existing elevator and to move forward with our design team to see if we can incorporate it into the existing design.
Okay, so I have a resolution to that fact. So it was moved by Counselor Kylie and seconded by Counselor Morgan, that Council direct, the Director of Community Services to proceed with option number three concerning the elevator at the complex and investigate incorporating an elevator into the new pool plan. All in favor? Thank you.
Okay, item four on tonight's meeting agenda is the preliminary budget discussion. This would be, I guess, the second part of our 2016 budget discussion. We started with inviting the public to come and present their concerns and their thoughts and visions of our community. And tonight, we're at the point where Counselor Kylie will introduce the discussion. And then I would ask that each counselor provide us with their input as to what direction we'd like to see.
I realize council members are aware of the issues at hand. It is important that the citizens of Kirkland Lake and the council, the CEO and directors are working diligently to maintain or improve the lifestyle of Kirkland Lake. We're not here to sell, the alarm bells are ringing, we must be prudent in our spending and be prepared for any future downturn in the local mining sector. and be prepared for any future downturn in the local mining sector. Two thousand and sixteen budget approach is not a slash and burn approach by anyone, however, we have to operate within our financial needs. Right now, our annual human resource, uh, cost, which includes wages, benefits, and pension, uh, have escalated to the point whereby the H R costs, uh, exceed the annual tax levy of ten million for two thousand and fifteen. It is clear the residents of Kirkland Lake cannot continue to be faced with the level of tax hikes that we've been faced with in two thousand and eleven, since two thousand and eleven. In order to achieve the right balance, we must start by doing things differently, by determining whether you need a certain service, then looking at how you deliver the services, and then how you can improve the efficiency in providing that service. The operational review plan is a good start, and I am confident that we can identify further savings and efficiencies. I firmly believe that council is aware of the taxpayers' who've, who've, aware of the concerns that the taxpayers are carrying, carrying along. Our residents may not have shown up at council meetings, however, the message on the street is clear, they cannot continue to take on further large tax hikes. Residents are also aware that council has dropped the tax rate on many occasions, however, at the end of the day, the reality is that they have been faced with steady increase in, increase in tax over pay to cover the annual tax bills. We need to make a serious, take a s- make a serious, take a serious look at decreasing the tax rate to offset increased property assessment in for two thousand and sixteen. Assessment values, uh, for two thousand and sixteen will not finally be able to fully be faced in the framework. The reality is that the firm market value, the local real estate market has dropped, so the town of Kirkland Lake does not have any control over the impact assessment values. We do have some control over the tax rates. Achieving a balance will not be an easy task, however, I'm confident that this can be achieved, even though there are tough decisions to be made. No change in rate could possibly result in a similar tax hike in, as in two thousand and fifteen, potentially high as eight and a half percent. We don't want to see that. While we're early in the two thousand and sixteen budget, we need to provide some direction and guidance to the directors and to cal- uh, what council expectations are, so that we are all working towards the same goals. One common thing that I feel we must look at is setting aside additional reserve funds outside of the operating budget. And I'm using, uh, snow removal and P P R overtime and sick pay for staff. This is mainly, this is not the fault of P P R, this is mainly due to flu epidemics or cold outbreaks in which staff and residents are exposed to infighting and, uh, stop being off sick or over time being paid. I realize that these are not, these are always unknown numbers, however, building up reserves for these two areas will hopefully avoid going into a budget deficit which has been the norm. Deficits have to be made up the next, up for the next year's budget, starting at a new year with a deficit carrying, uh, carry, carryover should be avoided at all costs. Identify, implement, uh, cost saving efficiencies that are brought forward from the operational review plan. Um, we look forward to seeing that, and it's gonna be an ongoing process, but it's, it's gonna take at least a month. Uh, tax arrears are an ongoing issue, we must be, take a little more aggressive approach in some cases where the taxpayer is using the town of Kirkland Lake as their bank for fund operations. I'm not necessarily talking about residential sector, I'm talking more on the commercial industry. A little bit on economic development and tourism. Uh, both Councilor Barker and myself feel that increasing the resources for the economic development department, uh, based on the needs of the economic development tourist department, should be defined by the director based on the goals and objectives and strategic plans. Right now, we're foc- focused on the sports strategy, which is geared towards tourism. With this up and running shorty, we need to focus on a strategic plan to attract small to mid-sized companies, industrial and commercial sectors, which would increase our tax base in that important opportunities. Uh, example, uh, budgeting ten thousand dollars for the direct director in attendance and participation in two trade shows, one in the street and one tourism in two thousand and sixteen. Uh, it's hard to measure the results from that, but out of sight, out of mind. If you're not there, nobody knows where we are. The time to invest in economic development is now, we need to be more proactive in this area, area and provide the resources for going to make any gains. That's, uh, Councilor Barker and myself for our thoughts, uh, looking for discussion. Any ideas? Agreements, disagreements?
Okay, uh, did you wanna go next, Councilor Morgan?
No. No, I mean, there's, there's not much there that I can argue with, Pat. Um, last year, you know, contrary to our good intentions, um, there was definitely a, uh, an increase in, in people's taxes felt pretty broad-based out in the community. Um, it was, um, you know, it's always difficult at this end because we're trying to set a multiplying factor that applies to everybody. At the same time, everybody's property is going up, down, you know, everybody's property is in flux. Uh, but for whatever reason, last year, it seems that everybody's property was going up, and then when you add in the multiplication factor, it, uh, everybody seemed to be hit with, uh, with a tax increase, which is definitely not something that I want to, uh, continue to do either. Um, I think another thing that it demonstrated last year is that it's, it's becoming increasingly difficult with, um, all of the costs that are getting foisted onto municipalities, whether it's utilities, whether it's, uh, arbitration settlements, whether it's, uh, our, uh, other government agencies that basically just send us a bill. Um, it's getting more and more and more difficult to just tweak our budget to accomplish the goals that we, that we need to accomplish when it comes to our taxpayers. And that's why I'm really pleased that we've embarked on a, uh, a structural review. I think that, um, you know, that is really the only way that we're going to be able to predict and to realize, um, savings as we go down the road. I mean, as you said, we're not, nobody's in this to slash and burn, uh, but I think we need to have a, a, a medium to long-range plan that's going to, uh, uh, deal with some of our cost centers and, and realize efficiencies over time. I mean, one of the things that I was most proud of early on in my, in my tenure as counselor was, uh, we set aside a small fund, I think it was about thirty thousand dollars, that would be available to, um, directors for innovative projects that they wanted to take on that would realize cost savings. Um, one of the things that we, we tagged, I think, for that was the, um, the remodeling at the complex. There was gonna be some, uh, some savings there, possibly generating more revenue through the rearrangement of the concession stand and a few other things. Uh, but, you know, budgets became tight and that thirty thousand dollars kind of got pulled back in and absorbed. Um, you know, I think there's a real, you know, there's a real benefit in having something like that where it encourages our directors to, um, you know, instead of always just throttling everything, there's some instances where, you know, a little bit of cash can trigger a big saving down the road. And, uh, so, I mean, I'd like to throw that out there on the table. I think that was something that, uh, it paid dividends in the past and, and I'd like to, uh, uh, at least figuratively make that available to, uh, to our directors going forward. Um, one of the things that came up in our public meeting, our public, uh, open house meeting, was the, um, trying to encourage our commercial sector. And one of the things that, that, um, I've been probably most adamant about is trying to give a very significant tax break to our commercial sector. Because our commercial sector was really getting out of hand, to the point where even the province realized that, you know, there was some, some work to be done. But I'm happy to say that since two thousand and six, right up until last year, we've consistently reduced our commercial tax ratio, um, to, you know, encourage development, and we have seen some benefit of this. We, we were seeing a new motel, we've seen other new industries, and, um, uh, even in thirteen and fourteen, there was a very small increase in the actual rate, but it was revenue neutral. So it was basically a flat situation. So that's something that we have been doing. It's not something we, uh, you know, really shoved from the rooftops, but it's certainly, I'm sure, noticeable from the commercial taxpayers', uh, perspective. Um, so those are the kind of things that we have been doing and, and I hope we continue to do, um, 'cause I think those sorts of things will, will pay dividends down the road. So, uh, that's my two cents for now.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Roman?
Uh, I, I just got a couple of notes, um, what I'm hoping to see, um, from, from the whole budget process. A lot of them have already been brought up already, but I'll just go through my list. Um, with respect to the water budget, that, that's the budget that we'll be preparing first typically, that's prepared by year end, um, so that is ready for January first. So with regards to that, I'm, I'm hoping to, to see the, uh, the two hundred thousand savings, uh, as well, um, that we were promised when the town was con- when, uh, the water treatment plant was contracted out of Ottawa, uh, along with the Swastika Suda Treatment Plant. Um, I would hope to see some savings realized in two thousand and fifteen. We, we were told, um, there, there was a phase in period, but certainly I would hope that in two thousand and sixteen, that we're budgeting this entire savings amount that we were promised. Um, towards the end of my time with the town, um, there, there were discussions underway about incorporating the cost of sanitary services into the water budget and, um, making the adjustments to the water bills and tax bills accordingly. And, and at one time, I, I thought this was actually being mandated by the province, so I'm not sure where that stands, if I could ask Nancy maybe?
Um, it's, it's being talked about. Uh, we have not received direction yet from the province, but they're definitely are looking at it, and there's an expectation within the next year to two years that we will see that they want the sanitation pulled out of the tax bill and billed separately.
'Cause, 'cause I, I certainly see a number of advantages to doing so, and, and I think it's something that we should be, at, at least entertaining or, or having some discussions, um, because, again, it's going to be probably a year process. It, it certainly isn't something we can do for this upcoming water budget, but we, we need to start discussing it, uh, at, at some point. So that's something I'd like to, to see happen. Um, with respect to taxes, I'll, I'll echo the, you know, the fact that, uh, even though we held our residential bill rate at, at zero percent increase, um, many people did see significant tax increases. Uh, so in two thousand and sixteen, I'd like to see some downward pressure, both residential and, and the commercial industrial areas. Um, I'm looking forward to the service review process, uh, hope for us to realize some very real savings, um, with that. Um, I also believe we, we have to start being more realistic when it comes to the issue of the, the tax arrears, tax write-offs. Um, our, our town auditor is making recommendations that we should be budgeting accordingly, and, and, and I tend to agree with him, so that we don't find ourselves in a, in a deficit position, uh, at, at the end of the year. Um, with regards to town operations, um, I, I wasn't a big fan this year of, um, Cleanup Week. Um, I, I, I find it's a costly undertaking, uh, and it occupies town resources a, a, at a critical time of year when I think we should be doing more spring maintenance. There's stuff like sidewalk maintenance, um, line painting, I find this stuff ends up getting done September, October, it's almost too late, uh, this, when the snow flies, uh, because then comes springtime, the stuff all has to be done again. I, I, I think, so certainly, um, for two thousand and sixteen, I, I'm, I'm not in favor of, of Cleanup Week. Certainly free tipping fees, makes sense to me, but, uh, I, I'd prefer to see town forces, um, focus their efforts on, on more spring maintenance type issues. Um, I'm also anticipating a bit of sticker shock when it comes to our, uh, waste collection and disposal contracts. I think we're in for a bit of an eye-opener. Um, when it comes to service reviews that we're talking about, this might be a good place to start, because, um, uh, I, I, I think we're looking at some significant increases and, uh, I, I was a little disappointed it went out to tender before we even had council discussions on, on, on the issue. And, uh, I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, when, when the tenders do come in.
Yeah, I, just, just to comment on that, I, I believe we, we had a presentation from staff on the, um, on, on the garbage, uh, on the waste, uh, uh, an in-camera meeting on the, uh, on the waste.
Okay, I'm, I may, I missed one meeting, I didn't wanna miss that, but, okay. Um, just last couple of points, um, we had, we had an aggressive capital program and capital reconstruction program, uh, in two thousand and fifteen. I'm hoping to see that continue. Um, Prime Minister-elect Trudeau is, is promising infrastructure money, and, uh, so I would hope staff is prepared with on-the-shelf designs for, for different degrees of, of funding, should they become available. Um, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Mino?
I think, uh, the knowledge of both, of all our problems are quite evident around the table, so, uh, not gonna repeat everything. I do have, uh, the tax arrears bugs me, because the tax arrear amounts are a direct impact on the, those who are paying their taxes. And those people who are getting increases in their taxes are also making up for those people. Uh, so it's a double whammy for them, they're faithful, you know, uh, some figures I'm looking at is a three-point-four-seven-six million dollar cumulative back taxes that are owed to this municipality. Now, if we could actually go get half of that, we'd be looking pretty good in terms of, you know, balancing our budgets and, and having some extra cash in our reserves. So I would certainly hope that this council would endorse, not tell the staff how to do their job, because that's their mandated job to do, but this council would endorse an aggressive, uh, uh, collection of taxes. It might mean some people are gonna, some suffer some, somewhere, but if we don't set that tone, all we're gonna do is just spread it around. We're just gonna, people are gonna come up to the conclusion that, you know what, the town is the last thing on my list in terms of my bill payment, uh, priorities. And when you start doing that, uh, you're creating not only a, a financial imbalance, but you're creating also an attitude around town. And that's, to me, uh, we, we need to address that, we need to address it, uh, a little bit more aggressively, and I, I, I would, I'm assuming staff probably covers their salaries anyways, because from those amounts, I'm reading three-point-four, one-point-three-ninety at the commercial side of it, and, uh, one-point-three-eighty at, uh, the residential side of it. So those are big numbers. So I think we need to put more energy in that area. Um, in terms of our operating budget, well, I think we've been saying the same old song, telling directors, you know, like, hold the line, hold the line. I believe if we give, uh, collective, uh, direction to, to staff to say, look, keep it at zero, I think we're doing well in the operating side of it, because if we leave it at zero, we know what, like Todd made reference to, we know that the other agencies, and we know that our hydro bill and all our gas bills and so on, they're gonna go up whether we, whether we say zero or, or less. So if we say zero and we get to offset the increase, then I think we're doing okay, we're not being, uh, how would I say, the slash and burn comment you made? We're not doing that, 'cause I don't think we're, we're there yet. We're actually managing not too badly in terms of the big picture. There are some areas that need to be looked at for sure. The Hockey Heritage, uh, the venture loan is coming up in two thousand and seventeen, I believe? Seventeen? So, you know, that, that's, that's what, three hundred thousand dollars a month? So that, yeah, a, a year. Yeah, but that'll offset the pool. So you know what, that's not too bad. There's a couple of the loans that I've looked at that, so in terms of our, uh, the venture side of it, we're doing okay, we're within our limits, we're not, uh, you know, like they say, the typical household should have, what, no more than forty percent in their debt load? Well, we're not there. So I think we're doing okay there, we're managing it well, and we have a, a vision of that, and that's been, uh, seen in how our loans are dispersed and how they're, they're finished off. Um, I know we're gonna have some increased assessment this year, we have a motel, we have various new, new construction, as minimal as may be. We have a motel, and we have various new construction, as minimal as may be, but I'm of the opinion that that extra assessment should be redirected right away to the reserves. And the reserves, for example, one of my wish list reserves is for a fire truck, for example. We buy a fire truck every 15, 20 years. I think this one here is 15 already? You don't know? I don't know. But I'm betting that it's, we're going to get a slap with another big one pretty soon. So I think we should take that increased assessment and really direct it into these reserves that we need to function with. I know at the DSAB level, ambulances, for example, are replaced at every 235,000 kilometers. So there's a budget every year, so much money, and in the fourth year, you buy a new ambulance and so on. I don't see that here. So I'd like to see reserves attacking that little dilemma, because it's going to be a big capital expenditure when we hit that dead-on. We're obviously a town of, what, 8,000 people right now? I'm estimating it. We have to decide, are we growing? Or are we going to try to vision it as a town that's solid in its 8,000, or a town that's going to decrease? So those, we have to take that into account in terms of our long-term planning. If we look at the general sort of population trends of the north, and the Tamiskaming specifically, we're on a decrease. So I can only assume, I might be wrong, I can only assume we're going to drop. With that, what I'm proud to say with that is that we, when I started here, we had like 169 employees at the town of Kirkland Lake when I started, like 15, 16 years ago. And I believe we're down to 90, Nancy, correct me there, but?
Yeah, 260.
260?
A lot of our part-time employees.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so I was talking all the full time. But they've come down too as a reflection of our needs and services. So there's, it's proportionally equal. So as we go down, these things come down too. They might not be coming down with everybody else's sort of happiness. And the impact thing is a big thing for us, you know. When you have your house, when your taxes go up, your net dollars, and we have no responsibility of that. The only consolation I can tell you there is that when you do sell your house, you'll regain that value real quickly in that price, because houses are still selling over-assessed value in this town, to my knowledge. So there is that consolation. I know it's money, it's potential money, but it's there anyway. So I'd like to tell people that when we talk to the subject on the streets is that, look, when you do sell, you will have some kind of recovering of some of those dollars you spent there. Also, I'd be prepared to ask the staff to submit with this year's budget some scenarios. And I'd like to go test out that, I know we're doing the review, but I'd like to test out the staff in terms of telling, tell us what it's going to cost us if we go 5% reduction. If I say cut 5%, I'd like to see those scenarios. And I'd like to see each department head come with me and say, what are we cutting? And then we could have a list here. We need to identify the list. I know we identified the airport a few years back. Mark, I believe you were telling us it was an $80,000 net sort of savings, taking into account everything. You gave us scenarios as to why we should keep it. And that sort of, we said, okay, we'll leave it there, because it's not killing us, it's not choking us. But we have to look at all those departments like that, in that optics, and say, okay, if we go 5%, what does it do? It doesn't mean we're going to decide on it, but at least we need to have a list. We need to have a checkoff list. And then perhaps politically, we might have to say, okay, well, you know what, we're going to attack this area of our town, because this is not fulfilling some services that we think are either essential or necessary or the masses are using. So I was just picking on you, but I was just using the airport as, we've identified that one, and we identified a price tag to it. So I'd like to challenge the staff and say, okay, give me the 5% cut, give me the sad news. We need to see that, because we're going to be asked to make those decisions probably within our term. So if we have it in front of us, we can digest that. The review, I agree that, the review is, what I need to say here is that I congratulate staff, however. They have been constantly reviewing everything we're doing on a day-to-day basis. You know, I think, I believe I cited an example. We have an electrician that's doing work at the TPR, doing work at the complex. And I believe they do other work somewhere else too, at the Hockey Heritage too. So that's the kind of efficiencies we're getting here. We're getting staffing efficiencies. It's not, we're not seeing it really in big numbers, but because it's ongoing, and I'm hoping like you, Aqua is actually going to materialize, because those are ongoing things. We are actually doing a very responsible fiscal management. And to me, I would encourage that to continue. It's just common sense in that. So I'm confident that staff thinks the way that residents are telling us. And I know they pay taxes too, and I know that it hits them in the wall the same way it hits you and me. So on that perspective, I believe we're on the same wavelength. And my last thing on my wish list is obviously, we have a 100th anniversary coming again. I mentioned it last year, in terms of the 100th anniversary of this town. And I would suggest that we at least budget, you know, $15,000, $20,000 a year for the next three years, to at least respond to that major event. So if you can find it somewhere, that would be pleasing to me. But it, you know, sometimes there's untangibles that are necessary in operation of a town, and this is one of them. And this is something that would tie in with the tourism strategy and also the economic development stuff. So to me, that's like a little wish list thing, but it's certainly significant in terms of the impact it's going to have on our community.
Thank you. Councillor Shamia?
Thanks, Pat. You did a great job there. A couple of things I'd like, when we start the budget, to have a list of spending that we can control and the one that we don't control. Like Todd mentioned earlier, there's some stuff we don't control. They just drop us on this, and this that we have to wait for. Electricity is like in the middle, maybe we call them, the one in the middle, electrical electricity, which we don't really control, but the way we control it may be used less. But like, for example, police, we don't have a say to them. They just set us a bill. DSAB is another one, which they have been working hard to try to keep it the same, but they still, they just set us a bill and we pay. TPR is very much the same thing. I mean, those are hard. Doesn't matter what you say. Try to cut 10%. Well, if you cut 10%, those where we can't control won't go down. So it's not 10%. Up there part is 20 or 25%. Because you all take the money off in the same column. And I'd like to see that, so people, we started, last year also, as Nancy, remember, we tried when we did the bill of mail rate, we wanted a different thing, but then Val came back and says, because of the software, we couldn't really do what we wanted.
I think you're talking about the ratios, Sean.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When it's in an OPTA software package, and you can't just manipulate each division the way you want it to, if you put one somewhere, the rest come out at a certain level. And they all have to, one residential being one, the rest of them all have to come out.
Is there a way to get a presentation on this, to look at this? Because to get a presentation that council one day, and there's a fast one?
Jen, is that something you could do? Yep. We've done it before. We've done a presentation on the ratios, but it wouldn't hurt.
If I remember right, we wanted to cut actually a big amount for homeowner, but at the end, we couldn't, because that software was sort of stopping us. We could have went a little bit, but we couldn't move the other one. And that hurt us at the end, because we, I mean, I think we all knew that the homeowner would get nailed last year, because 0% meant, didn't mean 0%, it meant for them 10 to 12% because of impact.
For those who had an increase in impact, there was quite a few people who had a decrease as well.
We had a decrease, yeah. The next thing, like, I think Jim and Norm mentioned, is tax arrear. That drives me completely nuts. I know in some Quebec cities and towns, they publish a list in the paper. I don't know if we want to go there, but I would not be against that. People that don't pay their tax, it's like, I mean, you can't do that to your neighbor. I mean, you have to pay your taxes. And it happens all the time. And this year, it's a big amount. It keeps going up and up. I don't know what to do. You could send us a bill, or send us notice all you want, but they don't pay, they don't pay. That, I mean, we have no control. Again, that's one thing, Pat, we have no control over it. And it just drives me nuts. And the last one, the garbage, like Jim mentioned, the sticker shock, I think we will have that. Will that be before we get the budget, or are we going to know?
We did receive the tenders in. They're being evaluated on a matrix right now, and will be brought back to council, along with our options that we did present before. I think we had an option A, B, and C as to our, you know, if we want to go another way. And so Mark is working on that presentation to bring back to council. Next meeting, Mark?
Yes. Okay. And the last thing, maybe, that's a funny one. Like, when we talk to subjects like garbage, because that's going to be a heavy subject, or budget, we should try to limit the time. Like, after two, three, four hours, the rest basically doesn't register anymore. I don't know if it's possible, maybe when you do budget, to have them by, maybe like do recreation one night, and then do operating one night. And because we all know after two hours, the rest, it gets hard. And sometime, we agree on stuff that we would not maybe agree, or we disagree on stuff that we would not do it. I know Todd and maybe me too fall asleep. It gets hard after a while. But I mean, it's funny, but really, that's what happens. And you two told, you said the whole power, it gets too long. I mean, some stuff we could go, but like budget stuff and the garbage will be a big, I think that'll be a big discussion, and that should be a long discussion. And I think Jim hit the nail on the head, what he said, we might get the sticker shock. And we have to look at our options, and that will affect the budget directly. The rest, thanks, Pat. Really good job.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Thanks, council. I think it tells me we're all sort of thinking the same, heading in the same direction. You know, the message that I would give to the CAO, to the directors, and to the managers of the town is to hold tight on spending, to continue to find efficiencies in the way that we do our daily work. And that was echoed really by everyone here today. I think it's extremely important that we look at a target of coming, and by holding tight on spending, it's to come in at a level that is the same or less than what we came in in 2015. And I know this is, it's a hard task, because of course, as Councillor Kylie mentioned earlier, the wages is a big part of our budget, and we deal with, I think, five different bargaining units. They get raises every year. So that's going to be a real task to meet the demands of the unions and the wage increases. And at the same time, we're faced with higher energy bills, and come in at the same as what we spent or less than this year, last year. If we can do that, I think we've accomplished something. It's sort of the direction that I'm hearing from everyone as well. The message I would give to the councillors that sit on our partnering boards, such as DSAB, Tamiskaming Health Unit, the Tex- Centennial Library, is the same message. To, and I urge you councillors to, when you're doing the budgets for the DSABs and the Tamiskaming Health Unit and the library, to send that same message, to hold tight on spending, to come in at what we spent in 2015 or less. It's a task, but I think it can be done. And the end result of everyone doing this is, you know, is to give some relief to the taxpayers of Kirkland Lake. I think this year, we have to provide relief to the taxpayers of Kirkland Lake. I'm hoping that we can, and I'm hoping that we're going to head for a target that will, because of our increased assessment, I'm hoping that we'll head towards a reduction in the 2016 tax rate for the people of Kirkland Lake. Because somehow, we have to offset that huge increase in assessment that everybody's talked about today, to the families that are living in the homes. So if we can accomplish that, as far as operating, I think we can achieve a reduction in taxes. With regards to capital, I'm in total agreement with everyone here. We have to continue, and 2016 is no different, to put money aside for capital expenditures. I think we owe it to future councils that we have a reserve built up for the challenges and the demands, that they'll meet as our time goes forward. So the end result for me is to provide the taxpayers of Kirkland Lake a reduction in the tax rate. Again, we have no control over impact, but let's try to reduce the effect that the increased assessment is having on the taxpayers. So that would be the message that I would send to staff, to council. And I would say that Nancy will continue. We get invoices, just like Councillor Shamia said, from the old Ontario Provincial Police. The one that we looked at is, I believe, looking at an increase in 2016. And, okay? Okay. And that's the efforts that we have to continue, because earlier, it was a problem for us, but we worked to solving that problem with this. And, you know, it's easy to say they're sending us the invoice, but they're providing us a service, and I think we have the right to fight for what we also believe that's worth. And, you know, the DSAB is a big contributor, you know, I think $3.1 million a year. They too are responsible to hold the, hold tight on spending. And Councillor Mino suggested, they do budget each year for a new ambulance every so, every so many kilometers. I wish as a municipality, we could do that. And here we are, paying their invoice for them to do that. So I just urge the councillors on these boards to really, to really put your word forward that they also have to hold the line on spending. So that's my two cents into the process. Councillor Kylie?
Yeah, just a little summary here. I think it was at the end of October I got these figures. Staffing changes are pretty well, Nancy, what you were saying, it was 2007, so 2006. It's pretty well the same, so we're holding our own. I like what Councillor Mino said about challenging the directors to, for example, a 5% cut. What would you do? What area would you do? Look at. And it won't be easy, but we have to look at worst-case, best-case scenario and take it from there. But I think there's been a clear message today that we have to hold the line, keep the taxes down as much as we can. People are finding it difficult. We noticed it in the tax arrears. I will say one thing. I think last year, our last budget certainly was a learning experience for both Councillor Barker and I. And I think it took a lot longer than it would normally be. And starting here tonight, we're off to a quick start, and I think the process will go a lot easier. I like the idea what Councillor Shamia was saying about getting a list of the controllable and non-controllable expenses. I think it gives everybody a little better idea as to what we can do in some areas and what we can't do. So some good ideas that came out here tonight, and I thank you for your input, and we'll take it from there. And I am very, very confident our directors and staff will be on the bandwagon with us to get the job done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Kylie. I just, to mention, I forgot to mention while I was talking, is I too am in agreement that tax arrears is a big issue. When the taxpayer doesn't pay, the neighbor has to pay on their behalf. And I believe that we have to take a good, strong, aggressive approach to reducing these taxes. Okay, so we'll have the introduction, reading, and consideration of bylaws. It was moved by Councillor Morgan and seconded by Councillor Kylie, that bylaw 15-109 being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute all documents related to the sale of land behind 108 Wood Street to Catherine Tylon to be read a first, second, and third time in an to be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed, all in favor? Thank you. It was moved by Counselor Kylie and seconded by Counselor Morgan that bylaw 15-110 being a bylaw to repeal 15-052 canceling the sale of 25 King George Court be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed, all in favor? Thank you. It was moved by Counselor Morgan and seconded by Counselor Kylie that bylaw 15-111 being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute a contract with DSAB for a one-time funding to implement the Quality Assurance Plan for Kirkland Lake Daycare be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed, all in favor? Thank you. Notices of motion, is this one? And this would be the opportunity to bring up?
I would ask the clerk to draft the motion that would be sent to the same people that we asked there that would ask the impact to review its delivery of services and to entertain more input from the municipalities as they are the ones being affected. So I don't know if you can tweak that, Joan?
Confirmation bylaw. It was moved by Counselor Kylie and seconded by Counselor Morgan that bylaw 15-112 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held October 20, 2015 be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed, all in favor? Thank you. Counselors' reports.
Last night we have the election, the federal election handled. We should send a letter to Mr. Angus. Worked hard again and go elect again. And like Jim said earlier, the liberals said they were ready to go to work harder with the cities and the town of, under the mayor of Ottawa, was really excited today. So now they're just again with the problem with the federal government. We have to keep our eyes open and our ears open to see what's going on because actually there might be more, maybe more chance to get them. At the end of the day, it was the highest turnout of voters, so the people are interested in what's going on. Sometimes they don't say anything because they're happy with what's going on, I don't know. But that last night was a lot of voter, and it was awesome to see. And so just letting people know, people are watching what's going on.
Okay, thank you. I had the pleasure of attending and to help plant the tulips at the Senetaph as we had the presentation the last Tuesday. And it was in recognition of Canada's role in the liberation of the Netherlands. And I was very pleased to do that. We'll go back in the spring when these tulips are all in bloom and we'll go from there with that. I also had the pleasure of attending the hospital, Kirkland Lake Hospital 40th anniversary at the present locations. And it was a good turnout there, and it was enjoyable. So I was pleased to go there to represent council at that as well. It was moved by Counselor Morgan and seconded by Counselor Kylie that council adjourn its regular meeting of October 20, 2015 to an in-camera meeting to discuss one contract and two property issues, all in favor? Thank you. Counselor Minow, you're up.
And Joan, probably you want to discuss the role of impact representing us at the ARB here when you talk to voters, settling.